Good afternoon. I'm calling to order the House Committee on Consumer Protection and Commerce. It is Tuesday, March 12, 2024. It is 2:00 PM. We're in Conference Room 329. For those who are on Zoom, please keep yourself muted and your video off until it is your turn to testify. For those who are testifying in person, we will be limiting testimony to two minutes. I'll give you a heads up when the two minutes are up, and then I would ask you to please wrap up your testimony. First, on the agenda, we have SB 2112 relating to installment loans. First to testify, we have Iris Cukada from DCCA's DFI in support. Thank you. Are there any other persons here to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to SB 2959 SD1 relating to taxation. First to testify, we have Gary Suganuma from the Department of Taxation with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair Garrison Kurth with DOTAX. The department stands on its written testimony, providing comments, and I'm available for questions if you have me.
Thank you. Next, we have Tom Yamachika from the Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments on Zoom. Okay, are there any other persons here to testify? Seeing none, members, we do have written testimony in support from the Disabilities and Communication Access Board, as well as one individual. Members, are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to SB 2126 SD1 relating to security deposits. First to testify on this measure, we have Lindsay Garcia from Hawaii Realtors with comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Lindsay Garcia from Hawaii Realtors. We appreciate the amendments that were made in the previous committee. However, we still have some concerns that we would like to highlight. Many of these rental insurance companies on the mainland adopt a model where they levy a monthly fee onto the tenants in order to cover the rental insurance. Others typically will ask for deposit in addition to a monthly fee. So regardless of payment structure, these tenants are ineligible for the premium refunds upon moving out, which contrasts to security deposits, which if the tenant were to leave the unit in a good shape, they'd be able to get that security deposit back. In the case of rental insurance, they would be unable to recover any of that money. So we just wanted to highlight that difference, and we stand on the rest of our testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Evan Owe from NIAP Hawaii Chapter with comments. Not here. Okay. Are there any other persons here to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, we do have written testimony in opposition from two individuals. Members, are there any questions? Representative Onishi.
Yeah, Lindsay, please. So you testified with comments, but I mean, so your testimony sort of alludes to the fact that you don't think it's a good idea.
Possibly not.
Possibly not, because...
No, we acknowledge the fact that there is a, depending on how it's set up, there is a possibility. For instance, if, so if there are damages done to a unit, the repairs are obviously limited to the cost of the deposit that the tenant is able to put down. However, there is a possibility, unless there is a limit that is added by the insurance companies, that the landlord may be able to file a claim and receive a funding that's higher or get reimbursed a cost that's higher than what the deposit would allow. But we are pointing out that in general, this practice would actually increase costs to the tenants. So there's kind of pros and cons. We're leaning towards the cons, but we wanted to be able to highlight both of that for you.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. It seems like...
Thank you, Representative.
Actually, if you might stay there.
On the opposite side.
On the opposite side, right, it's a policy call on your behalf. Correct.
So on that same line, I'm just, I understand the principle behind the rental security insurance. I'm just curious if you have any information with regards to how much these insurance policies actually cost the tenants on a month-to-month basis, or even annual basis?
That we're not sure of, just because we're not aware of any companies currently operating in the state.
Okay. No, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to the next item in the agenda. HB 2132 SD1 relating to the Residential Landlord-Tenant Code. First to testify on this measure, we have Sergio Alcubilla from the Hawaii Workers' Center in support. Not here. Moving on, we'll have Lindsay Garcia from Hawaii Realtors with comments.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chairman, Lindsay Garcia for the Hawaii Realtors. We provided comments as well on this measure. We do appreciate the intent of it to try to streamline the landlord-tenant code. However, we do not believe that these changes are ideal at this time. In section, or in section one of the bill, we don't believe that extending the tenant's remedy for repairs from five business days to ten calendar days is ideal for tenants. And then in section two, we do not believe it's necessary to extend the wait time for landlords to initiate summary possession on a unit from five business days to 10 calendar days. And we respectfully request that, should this bill move forward, to please remove section two of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other persons here to testify on this measure? Yes, please.
Chair, Vice Chair Sergio Alcubilla with the Hawaii Workers' Center, and we offer testimony in support of this bill. You know, as some of you may know, we have a co-fa workers' association where a lot of them are coming from the islands of Micronesia. We had helped them organize around making repairs to their apartment unit. There were six units there, and you know, just some of the living conditions there, it's hard to imagine that that's happening in 2024. No electricity, no running water, holes everywhere. And of course, the landlord ended up evicting all of them. But really, there's holes within our landlord-tenant code for repairing the duck. $500 is definitely not enough for making some of these repairs. And it's time that we do update our landlord-tenant code. You know, in terms of the business days, you know, helping low-income tenants before with landlord-tenant issues. There's a lot of confusion between business days and just regular, just regular days. So just the clarity for that would be super helpful. And then we did offer comment regarding just further clarity, just to make the bill consistent throughout, that it also include other provisions of that statute to include calendar days rather than business days. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of this bill.
Thank you. Are there any other persons here to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, we have written testimony in support from Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks, as well as two individuals in support and two individuals in opposition. Members, any questions on this measure? Okay, seeing none, we'll be moving on to SB 2127 SD2 relating to the Residential Landlord-Tenant Code. First to testify on this measure, we have Raji from the State of Hawaii Office of Consumer Protections in support.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair and members. Manam Moriarty, Executive Director, Office of Consumer Protection.
Ashley, can you? Happens more often than you think. No, no, no. Please proceed.
Thank you. The department testified in support of this bill. If you can hear me, a little better. Thank you. Some of the themes of this session at the legislature have been the acute shortage of affordable housing and the emergency response on the island of Maui. And make no mistake, even if this bill doesn't have a preamble, this is a bill that will help with affordable housing. Right now, we don't hear about property owners who are willing to waive the application screening fee for tenants applying to rent their properties. And it's not clear why, because the property owners themselves don't stand to lose out on any money. They can voluntarily increase the amount of the rent for the first month and make up any difference in the cost that's required for the application screening fee. What may be happening is that business as usual is going on, and property owners have actually hired agents who have business arrangements in place with tenant screening companies to screen the tenants. And they pay those agents. And if the agents don't get paid upfront when the screening occurs, they'd have to make a new business arrangement. That's an unfortunate and not at all, I think, insurmountable barrier, because I think we deserve affordable housing in the state of Hawaii. And I'm happy to talk more about why this measure relates to affordable housing, because it really will help people be able to afford to live in rental units. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lindsay Garcia from Hawaii Realtors in opposition.
I'm afraid to touch this now. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, again, Lindsay Garcia from Hawaii Realtors. So we are in opposition to this bill. We acknowledge the testimony from OCP and understand where that office is coming from. We would note, however, that the screening process is not limited to just credit reports and criminal background checks. The entire screening process can also include reviewing eviction history, verifying employment, verifying personal references, and other records to properly vet tenants. Property managers are not just concerned with the ability of an applicant to pay rent, but also what kind of tenant the applicant will make. Therefore, this measure may not eliminate the need for an application fee. But more importantly, we would note that it is actually very easy to edit a PDF. So a property manager may be reluctant to accept a criminal background check or a credit report from an applicant, because there's no way of knowing whether that PDF has been has been tampered with, leading property managers to potentially decline these types of applications. And that would, that entire process would unfortunately delay the application process and be detrimental to tenants who are searching for rental property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sergio Alcubilla from the Hawaii Workers' Center in support.
Sorry, I think I may have been the one that caused this to begin with. Good afternoon again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of this committee. I'm Sergio Alcubilla. I'm the Executive Director of the Hawaii Workers' Center, and we stand in support of this bill. You know, really, my job here is just to bring the real-world implications of some of the things that we think through here with the legislature. You know, I wanted to share the story of what happened as a continuation of that tenant, of those tenants that were evicted from that substandard housing. So of course, they don't have a rental history coming from Micronesia, right? So a lot of times, they're at the mercy of their landlords. What was a shock to them was every time they had applied for a place, all the adults, you know, all the adults were required to submit an application fee. So that included adults that weren't working. So these families, some of them are multi-generational households, right? So it included, you know, stay-at-home mom, stay-at-home parents. It included Kupuna. They were all required to submit an application fee, which doesn't really make sense if they're not the ones responsible for paying rent. The issue also came to us, you know, from our organizers in Maui, where they were saying that a lot of these, some of these homes or some of these things that they were seeing online, they would take their application fee and they would never hear back. That's why for us, you know, it's, this issue is important. You know, I compare it again to our college application fees, right? If you have a lot of money, you can apply to as many colleges as you want. You don't have to think twice about it. But if you're on limited income, maybe you apply to one or two, and you hope that's the end of spending money on college application fees unless you get a waiver. But I think the same analogy applies to affordable housing. You know, a lot of our low-income families, a lot of the people that we work with, they can't apply, you know, every single time, spending $400 or $500 to apply for a place. That was a story that we recently heard from one of the members of our Maui Tenants Association, that they spent almost $500 in application fees trying to find a place in Maui. And we do hope that there can be some sort of remedy through this. And, you know, we do hope that there can be some sort of committee that can work on updating our landlord-tenant code. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other persons here to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, we have written testimony in support from the Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks, two individuals in support and two individuals in opposition. Members, any questions on this measure? Representative Onishi.
Yeah, first for, let's see, I'm sorry. Office of Consumer Protection? Thank you. So it's interesting, because in the bill, it talks about how landlord or landlord or agents charging the fee may include personal reference checks, tenant reports, criminal background checks, credit reports produced by any consumer credit reporting agency. But upon request by the applicant, a landlord or landlord's agent shall provide the applicant receipt of the application, receipt of payment for the application screening, breakdown of costs, but only the criminal background checks and credit reports. Does that make sense? I mean, the landlord might have done a more extensive check, but we're only requiring those type of reports to be furnished?
Yes, I think it makes sense to provide the information that most landlords want to get. And certainly, most landlords do want to receive the criminal background check and the credit report. I think you're also hitting on something, that some landlords want more. And if we, the measure perhaps tries to strike a balance, right? Knowing that everybody, every landlord wants these particular items, and some landlords want more. I think frankly, more could be done with this bill to improve it, so that more, I don't know what you would call it, but maybe the entire portfolio for that particular applicant would have to be provided to the applicant, so they could use it again.
I mean, that would be the simple change, right? Whatever was requested by the previous landlord or landlord agent would also be provided, because you're asking for everything else, right? The payment amount, the breakdown of the cost covered by the application, I mean...
I'm sure our friends at the Realtors would have some suggestions about that. But yes, I think if we could craft the language appropriately, that would be a good change.
Well, I mean, their testimony alluded to the fact that reports general, or requests from landlords and landlord agents generally includes more, right?
That's right.
But it's not specified in this bill.
I heard the same thing you heard.
So in the case where only this bill passes, the landlord has the ability to ask for an additional fee to do other checks?
Yes, that, so, and bear in mind the backdrop here. The last session, the legislature passed a law, and a law was enacted that is going to cap fees effective May 1st. So the landlord will only be able to charge the actual amount of the costs incurred that are expended for these background checks, for these tenant screenings, right? So we think there is a safeguard built in due to that new law. Hopefully, that will deter any abuses. But there will be an ability, to answer your question, yes, for the landlord potentially to ask for an additional fee to cover items not included at this point in this draft of the bill.
Yeah, so somehow, this bill doesn't make sense then, because I mean, we're asking for half of the apple, right? And so we're saying, well, you can get half of the apple for free, but the rest, the other half, you're still going to charge the same amount, right?
I think you've hit on that, and we'd be happy to try and come up with a proposal for the committee to review before this bill moves forward, or for your consideration at least.
Do you folks have a position in terms of requesting background checks on every adult that's going to occupy that particular rental?
So our position is to follow the strict guidelines of the statute. And we don't enforce, to be clear, but we do provide information to the public. Now, with the new law coming into effect May 1st, our position is that it is unclear in this law whether every single adult residing in the property needs to submit a screening fee for tenant screening. And we've made that position available publicly. We've come up with some educational materials pursuant to the mandate in the last session's law. And we've had those materials distributed to, through the real estate, we're planning to distribute through the Real Estate Commission. We've issued a press release, and the Honolulu Realtor, Board of Realtors has recently featured coverage of the new law and some of our educational materials that we've come up with.
So it's still unclear who the landlord or landlord agent can request information, or which adults occupying the premises, they can request a fee for, for checks, right?
That's right. With which adult? Because it's clear that somebody who's younger than age 18, as long as they're not emancipated, cannot be charged. So which adult can be charged is still at issue. We think, and we actually recommended last year certain language in the conference committee, which would have defined the term applicant, to make clear that only the person paying the rent would have to submit that. Now, certainly, people can have reasonable differing opinions as to whether that's the appropriate policy. But we, in terms of clarity, we think that amendment appropriately clarifies the situation, that only an adult paying rent has to submit the fee.
Paying rent, so in a married couple, you could request for both? Because, I mean, you don't know who's actually paying the rent, right?
That's a fair question. I think when we, I'd have to take a look again at the application. And different companies, of course, have different applications that they, that they request the applicant fill out. And what information they request from each applicant may differ from company to company.
Okay, yeah, I'm just questioning this because of previous testimony that was brought up in regards to who's responsible, or who these fees could be asked of, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair, Vice Chair, I forgot to, and I intended in the beginning, to ask for a ruling on a conflict of interest. My family, or my wife's family have rental units, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, members, any further questions? Oh, Chair.
So you mentioned a law that's about to take effect. So what, what, what is the impact? So what, what, what is the impact of that law moving forward?
Let me take the example from Mr. Alkabila, who just testified to the committee about a person who reported that they had to pay a $400 or $500 application fee on the island of Maui. Effective May 1st, that will be unlawful under the law passed unless, of course, for somehow the landlord is incurring $500 worth of expense to do the background on this particular tenant. Because as you know, the, the law itself ties the amount of the fee to the amount of expenses actually incurred by the landlord. My guess is that $500 represents an pretty absurd markup. And if you listen to the State of the Union address by President Biden, one of the things that he and his administration are focused on are junk fees. And certainly we would consider this type of a fee to be a junk fee. And there are efforts at the federal level, at the state level, to combat fees that are being charged and that are hurting consumers and in this instance, applicants. If there's any particular sort of application that you had in mind, Chair, I'm happy to address a particular set of facts too, if I can.
Okay. Well, you're in kind of looking back on the, in the history of this particular legislation. It seems it's rooted in law from Washington State. And there in Washington State, they have this comprehensive reusable tenant screening report, which addresses the lack of affordability, accuracy, and access to justice in tenant screening. It says renters are routinely denied housing for reasons they never get to know of by screening reports they never get to see. So that was, that, that's kind of the premise for this particular bill. So if we're moving forward and May 1st, this new law comes into effect, is this bill necessary at this point?
Yes, this bill is necessary because it does not directly address the affordability of housing issue. And right now, when you may have a tenant property, please stop me if you've heard this and you already know, but when we have an open property that, to be rented, and let's say 10 renters apply to the property at a fee of $50 per renter, that's $500 upfront. And the person that gets the fee, that gets the place, that rents the place ultimately from the landlord, they enter into an arrangement, they go happily on their way. The other nine people are still looking. Now, the landlord and the tenant can come to an arrangement such that no fee is necessary upfront, right? And it's folded into the, the fees will be folded into the cost of the first month's Now that could cover all the expenses, so nobody's out any money, except perhaps the agent who incurs the upfront expenses. But the other nine people are still looking and they're out their $50 and they may have applied to seven or eight other places. If they've applied to eight places that they've been turned down from at $50 a month, that's $400 a month. That's $400 total. And if we were in a situation where the initial rent at the place they eventually find is $1,600 a month, effectively, they've already paid $2,000 because they spent $400 on application screening fees that didn't get them anything. So why the landlord simply doesn't choose to fold it into the rent is what we're trying to get at here. Because there is no requirement by law that the landlord charge an upfront fee. What I think is occurring is that the business practice of the agent handling the screening is dictating the upfront fee. And if a landlord was informed that they could waive this fee, then I think in many instances, people are sensitive to the acute shortage of housing here in Hawaii and they would choose to do that as landlords. But I don't think right now, the landlord's agents are asking the question to their clients and saying, there's a, there's some costs associated with tenant screening. You have options. You can charge upfront, or you can fold it into the rent, or you can not charge at all. Those conversations, as far as we can tell, are simply not happening. And we're trying to put our finger on the reason why. And we think it's because one possible explanation is that the agent is handling the screening under some particular sort of business arrangement where they need to recover the cost earlier. Or there may be some arrangement that we're not privy to that, that may be dictating sort of how business is handled. That's the point that we wanted to make today.
Okay. Representative Onishi.
Yeah, I have a follow-up. So I have a house for rent. I use an agent or I do it myself. I get eight people apply. They all, I say, okay, it's $50 for the background check. They pay me the $50. I select one renter. I have a choice of whether or not to accept that fee or to say, okay, you know what? I'll discount your first month's rent for the $50, correct?
You could do it that way, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I'm still, I'm still out that $350 that I had to pay to do those other background checks. How do I recover that without charging the applicants?
So instead of providing the successful applicant a discount, you increase the first month's rent for the successful applicant. And that's how you cover the cost that you're out.
But that means then the, the successful renter is paying for the background check for everybody else who may be bad applicants.
You could see it that way, certainly. And, and that I think is probably one of the tough calls that you have to make because right now, I gave you the other example with the person on the other side, the person who's unsuccessful in applying to your property, and they end up finding a property for $1,500 a month. And they say, great, I'm paying $1,500 a month for this property and I'm in a house. But effectively, they're paying $1,900 for the first month because they're already out the $400 they spent on application fees.
But they could have been paying the $1,900 anyway because there were nine other applicants that applied for that house. And if we're using your scenario, I would have upped the rent from 15 to 19 to cover the first, but that's arbitrary, right? Because I don't know how many people are going to apply.
You don't know how many. There is a policy principle though behind this, and that's transparency. And that is that the landlord should be upfront, in theory, right? With the tenant about how much this place actually costs. And we should, as a policy matter, be promoting an environment where transparency is the norm, where we don't have hidden fees tacked on to the cost of our purchases. And we do, we do have those.
Well, in the case of this application fee, that's upfront. You don't have to apply to that house or to that unit if you don't want to pay the fee, correct?
That is correct.
And the rent is generally based upon what the expectation of the owner is. So that's upfront too, right? Because that has to be stipulated in your rental agreement. So I'm not sure what you're alluding to in terms of being hidden.
Well, let me make an analogy, maybe to the airlines, right? Because I just booked a ticket for a trip on a budget airlines and I was aware that meals would not be provided. So I, I went up and I looked up the cost of the meals and I pre-ordered a meal for That's still a fee that I paid, even though it was, I was aware of it and I had noticed, that's an additional fee that wasn't included in the price. And I, I think if I can come back to this example, the, the idea that there's a fee tacked on is not inherently objectionable, but how do we determine somebody got value for the fee? That it wasn't just an excessive fee?
Well, that's why we passed the other bill, right? To stipulate you can only recover your costs and you got to prove your costs, right?
That, that is correct.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your dialogue.
Okay, members, any further questions? Chair.
Realtor.
Law Chair.
So I guess you've, you've heard our discussion thus far. I just wanted your take on what's been said.
Well, when it comes to the law that was passed last session and is about to go into effect, it doesn't go into effect until May 1st. It's, we agree that this, this, that was a very good bill and landlords must justify upon asked, you know, to, to provide a receipt, a cost breakdown of everything that they use the screening fee for. And they need to be able to justify that. The, when it comes to the who should be screened, we do, you know, we, we do, as we pointed out last year, the rental agreement is a contract, is a, is a contract. You make a contract with the tenants that are, that are staying in the, in the unit. And so every adult who is staying in the unit signs that contract and so every adult may be subject to screening as a result. Again, it, as, as, as a representative pointed out, it, as long as the rent is paid, the landlord doesn't necessarily know who, which of the adults is actually paying that month or the next month, but all, all adults who sign that contract are liable to ensure that payment is made. And so we do believe that the balance was struck with the, the bill that was passed last year. And again, when it comes to the bill that we're contemplating today, again, we would point out that we understand the intent of the measure to try to reduce costs, but we do point out that it's very easy to edit a PDF. And that is why the landlord may hesitate to accept a screening report that was provided by the applicant because that, that, that second landlord would have no idea of knowing if this was an accurate report or not. And so in doing so, the tenant may, their application may be rejected. And so, whereas if they had just paid the screening, the application fee and gotten screened by the landlord, they may have had a chance at actually being able to rent out that unit.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Members, any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll be moving on to SB 2600 relating to condominiums. First to testify, we have Lindsay Garcia from Hawaii Realtors in support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other persons here to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, we have written testimony in support from Poli Hua Townhouse Association, Hawaii First Realty LLC, and two individuals. Members, are there any questions? SB 2600. Seeing no questions, we'll be moving on to SB 2727 SD2. This is relating to condominiums. First to testify, we have Guanyama Maudalau from the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee, Guanyama Maudalau, Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority, standing on my written testimony in support. But I just wanted to note that the, there will be no assessments placed on the real property tax bill of individual unit holders. This is a commercial property program, not a residential one. I see in the testimony, written testimonies, there's a little bit of confusion between the residential and the commercial. So this is a commercial property assessed financing. There was also mention of a LA County program being shut down. That might have been the residential one. We actually have a testifier on Zoom from California who could speak more to it. But just last year, there was an article in Biz Journal about how commercial property assessed financing helped bridge a capital gap for LA County. And lastly, I just wanted to respectfully request that the definition of commercial properties be reverted back to the SD1 version. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii State Energy Office in support. Thank you. Next, we have Mary Alice Evans from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development in support. Not here. Moving on, we have Nadine Ando, Director for the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs in support. Thank you. Next, we have Philip Nurney from CAI in support. Thank you. Next, we have Lindsay Garcia from Hawaii Realtors in support. Thank you. Next, we have Sanhai, sorry, Michiko Ito from the Hawaii Bankers Association with comments on Zoom. Moving on, we have Stephanie Sakamoto from H C, H C U L with comments. Thank you. Next, we have Greg Misakian in opposition on Zoom.
Thank you. I'm just pulling up my statement here. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee for an opportunity to just make a comment here. I, I do oppose this, this bill because I do have concerns that it's not being looked at carefully. And in my written testimony, I only had an opportunity to provide a very limited written testimony. I've been very busy. But in that limited testimony, I put headlines. And I'm just going to read that to you. And it basically states, "Los Angeles County Ends Pace Program Marred by Fraud, Abuse, and Unfavorable Loans." And I ask this committee, I, hopefully you guys have done this already, but I've asked previously that you look at this carefully because there are problems with these types of loans and the repercussions of doing something that looks favorable upfront will eventually come back to haunt everyone, I think. We don't want that to happen. So I appreciate the opportunity to just bring that to the committee's attention and hopefully you've, you've looked into the, the various concerns regarding these programs. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Yaki, Individual in Support on Zoom.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Michael Yaki, Senior Vice President at Petro's Pace Finance, a commercial pace originator, one of the largest in the country. I stand on our testimony, just wanted to respond briefly to Mr. Misakian. The LA County program was residential only, but it did not actually end commercial pace anywhere in Los Angeles County. We just did a financing there a few months ago. Many others have done as well. Over 78 communities in Los Angeles County allow and, and have seen a commercial pace. It is not the same thing as residential as we knew when we, when you passed the legislation last year, and I stand by for any questions if you so need. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Lila Mauer in opposition on Zoom.
Allah, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee, I stand on my written testimony as submitted and in opposition. And I'm still concerned, I don't have an answer as to whom does commercial property owner refer to when we're talking about condominiums.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other persons here to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, we have written testimony with comments from Department of Budget and Financial Services from the City and County of Honolulu, support from Poli Hua Townhouse Association, support from Island Insurance Companies, Pace Loan Group, and Hawaii Insurers Council. Also supportive testimony from Parkland Gardens A O A O Board of Directors, Holomooa Collaborative, Hawaii First Realty LLC, CPACE Alliance, Nuvien Green Capital, Hawaii Solar Energy Association, Castle Grain Finance, Pats at Puna La Uu, Hawaii Energy, CPACE Lending, Holomooa Collaborative, AIO, Hawaii Gas, Hawaii Community Foundation, Build Better, Live Better, HVACA, Mana Up, Tori Richard, Ulupono Initiative, Conti. HVACA, Mana Up, Tori Richard, Ulupono Initiative, Contessa Condominium, Heritage House Condominium, and six individuals in support and one in opposition. Members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to SB 2404 SD1 relating to condominiums. First to testify, we have Philip Nurney from CAI in opposition.
Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members, my name is Phil Nurney, testifying on behalf of CAI. CAI opposes this bill on principle. But the focus of what I would like to just say now is that there are bills moving in the legislature to implement the unanimous recommendation of the Condominium Property Regime Task Force. And this is, this subject matters squarely within the scope of that task force jurisdiction. So what we would request instead is if the committee is interested in pursuing this, that it be folded into the task force bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lila Mauer, Individual in Support on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I happen to be the Vice Chair of that Condominium Property Regime Task Force, and I disagree with Mr. Nurney. I support SB 404 SD1. However, I prefer the more protective measure HB 2067 HD2. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next, we have Dale Head, Individual in Support on Zoom.
Aloha, CPC Chair, Nakashima Vice Chair Sayama, and committee members. My name is Dale Head. This bill derives from my years of long effort to secure unfettered, normal voting rights for H2A members, which will not happen in this session. Five years and five weeks ago, I addressed this committee for HB 347 in 2019, the same proxy abuse issue. Explained how they are often misused as an administrative tool by some private companies to manipulate, hijack, and steal H2A elections. Both CPC and judiciary passed it, but then it was killed in the Senate by their CPA chair who refused the email request from another senator to give it a hearing. The proxies manipulation intrigue is a decades-old problem which state is aware of. It refuses to investigate, making it a form of racketeering, in my opinion. The right to vote is not specified in either the US or Hawaii Constitution. So what does anything goes down at the Capitol? Commercial special interests that have profited from this scandal for decades now are determined to keep the status quo. Enough is enough. Please pass SB 2024 SD1. Are there any questions?
We'll be taking questions later. Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Greg Misakian, Individual in Support on Zoom.
Aloha again, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Greg Misakian, and I currently serve as First Vice President of Kukua Council, Sub District 2, Vice Chair of the Waikiki Neighborhood Board, and a Director on my Condominium Association's Board, Keone Anna. I, I do wanna note that testimony was only posted as the haring began. And I was able to see that the same group of attorneys and associates are using the same boilerplate testimony in opposition. This is something I'm seeing as a reoccurring theme. I counted 18 in the time I had to review that. At my condominium association, we have very serious misconduct by a majority of the board. The management companies involved and others are involved. Some of the misconduct is mentioned in my written testimony, but there is much more, including some that's criminal in nature, ongoing investigations. The misconduct is done with impunity because the majority of the board think that they can get away with it and have been. The frequent misconduct is being led by our association board president, who is a public official and works as a corporation counsel attorney for the city and county of Honolulu. Today, I ask you to please help me and a third of the population with a simple amendment to SB 2404 SD1 to restore it to what it originally said, removing options to give proxies to the board as a whole and directors present. HB 2067 and the current version of HB 2067 HD2 got it right by removing both options, as both give bad boards the ability to remain in power for extended periods of time. By restoring this bill to its original form, we can move one step closer to addressing abuse of power within condominium associations across Hawaii. But again, I ask that you please pass with the amendment. I apologize for my voice. I'm recovering from a cold. And I thank you for your time and again to testify today. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeff Sedino, Individual in Support.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Jeff Sedino, and I strongly support this bill. This bill is needed because it will better align condominium elections with how local, state, and national elections are conducted. To my knowledge, I have no option on a state election ballot to give my proxy to the majority political party to cast it as they see fit. I think it is obvious that this would create a system where the incumbent majority party slowly takes over and the minority party slowly gets squeezed out. To my recollection, when voting as a whole was introduced by a so-called Blue Ribbon Committee, the only person on the committee representing owners wrote in the final report that he predicted that voting as a whole would be abused by the trade industry. So I speak only for myself, but I have seen voting as a whole significantly degrade good governance in my association and completely demotivate qualified owners from running, owners who had been critical of the board justifiably. The dangers of voting as a whole are obvious when you apply it to yourselves. If you think voting as a whole is a good idea for condominiums, then I think you should implement that for your own elections also. But if you're not gonna implement it, voting for, for a whole, for your own elections, then you should get rid of it for condominium elections as well. Just responding to previous testimony that there's a task force that is studying this. The effective date of that got pushed back to 2026. So if you wait for the results of that, it's gonna be three, four, or five years before we do anything, and I don't wanna wait that long. To my recollection, this committee passed an identical version of this, the House bill out, already. So I ask that you pass this bill forward as well. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Thank you. Next, we have Lord Schibert, Individual in Support on Zoom.
Hi, Chair and Vice Chair. Thank you for letting me testify. I would like to add to my written testimony that in 2006, Royal Court was a part of the study for fire sprinkler systems. At that time, we were, hard cost would be $15,000 per person. At that time, when Todd Schibert was a, was a director, we tried to get that on the reserves and was unsuccessful. In 2011, I tried to get that back on the reserves and it was unsuccessful. On top of that, I was trying to get a maintenance on the federal switchgear, which is really important because it's very old. I couldn't get that onto the reserves. 2013 ended my first directors, I was time, and I was voted out by, by the board as a whole. In 2020, the same thing happened. I was voted off of the board as a whole. But I do wanna add an amendment to, to this bill to remove also the proxies to the directors as shared. And both of them need to go. Today, we have a mandate to replace the federal switchgear. OSHA has the power to find any condo up to $161,000 if they don't comply with mandate. If we had put aside money for the sprinkler systems back in 2006, which should have been $15,000 per unit, a million dollars, $1,680,000. Today, we would have had the money in for the sprinkler systems. Although it wasn't a mandate at that time, it certainly was coming down the road. And the board has the power to either just go ahead and do it on their own or they took the different route and didn't do it.
My apologies, Ms. Schibert, your two minutes are up. If you could please wrap up your testimony.
Thank you so much, but you know, we've been at this for a long time because the reserves are sourly, sourly underfunded. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lynn Matusso, Individual in Opposition on Zoom.
Yep, I thank you. You pronounced my name right. That's great. I'm a condo owner and a board member of Honolulu High Rise. I am in strong opposition to this bill. In the late 1990s, the Manoa Neighborhood Board took a position in a private business transaction relating to a building owned by Ukumaru K. Corporation. As a result, the Manoa Neighborhood Board was sued because they got involved in a private matter and two, and board members had to pay fines. The city will not support boards and commissions getting involved in private board members. Fast forward now, and we have the same thing where four neighborhood boards have taken positions on these bills. And some of them, the board members may very well get sued. And then I don't think they care or they don't know about it. I also wanna talk about the two things. We have our board, our annual meeting in two days. As of Friday night, we had more, we had quorum only at 13.77%. 12.425 was assigned. At that point, we would not have been able to hold a meeting because we wouldn't have a majority voting for anybody because quorum only beat the assign. When we added in the split, which Misakian and company want now take out, that was 7.698, which brought us up to 20.123, which at least would have given us the ability to hold a meeting because we would have had a majority of owners present, which were more than the quorum only. Had we added in the whole, that was another 18%, which would have brought us up to 37%. So if they really don't want the people to stay in power, then they should be opposing this bill because if there is no meeting, everyone stays in until the next meeting, which will be another year. And that will go on forever and ever and ever. Approximately one-third of the population.
My apologies, Ms. Matusso, your two-minute time limit is up. If you could please wrap up your testimony.
Yeah, I, I, I think that basically the few who are complaining, who seem to have the voice, wanna basically hurt the one-third of us who live in condos. And this bill really needs to be defeated. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other persons here to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, we do have written testimony in support from Poli Hua Townhouse Association, opposition from AOA Mariners Village, AOA Waialai Place, AOA The Continental Apartments, Law Office, Offices of Mark K. McKeller, Hawaii First Realty, Honolulu Tower AOA, Chamber of Sustainable Commerce, Hawaii State Association of Parliamentarians, AOA Lakeview Sands, and two written testimonies in opposition from Pule Le Hua AOA. There's also 30 written testimony in opposition from individuals and four written testimony from individuals in support. Members, are there any questions on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, we'll be taking a short recess for decision-making. Recession.
Okay, reconvening the Committee on Consumer Protection and Commerce. It's Tuesday, March 12, 2024. We're in Rome, Conference Room 329. We're reconvened for decision-making. On the first measure, SB 2112 relating to installment loans. Chair's recommendation is that we defect date this to July 1st, 3,000. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Voting on SB 2112, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair, Vice Chair, vote aye. Representative Amato.
Aye.
Representative Bellotti, excused. Representative Hashem. Representative Hossi Burdick, excused. Representative Gates, excused. Representative Loewen.
Aye.
Representative Nishin.
Aye.
Representative Tam.
Aye.
Representative Pyrick.
Aye.
Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. Members, Senate Bill 2959, Senate Draft 1, related to taxation. The Chair would like to adopt DOT tax amendments prohibiting claiming travel expenses twice. On page, three lines, 3 to 4. Adding in, failure to comply with the foregoing provision shall constitute a waiver of the right to claim the credit. We will remove the savings clause. And technical amendments need for clarity, consistency, and style. Members, questions or comments? Yes, Representative Nishin.
Yeah, you know, DOT tax had other amendments in regards to how it was applied.